We'll make the applicant do it.
The burden should be on the applicant, but what's the certainty? Like, the applicant certifies that they sent it all out, and so what? That doesn't mean anything.
They show that the packet.
The certainty. Show the packet of it, if not, everybody return to your seat.
Not then, what's going to be returned for her?
Right, right.
What's the difference, is person A as opposed to person B?
I believe in, I believe that Valerie is going to send out 580 mailers. I don't believe that every applicant's going to send out 580.
I had a wait, I'm sorry, I was a little late because it was snowing, so I always put the snow to...
I did see some snowflakes, but I didn't see them accumulating.
It did.
Doesn't matter.
They accumulate, where do you live?
The fright of it.
I live on Tanglewood Lane, out by Boxwood, it's very different, actually. Where are you located?
It's very different.
Right near the common.
Oh, so, yeah, it's different.
Come on.
It was, did you see that? It was on, it was on my mulch.
I'm going to top beer, else we get too many more feet.
You do, you have a high elevation.
Well, the elevation, you must be a couple hundred feet higher.
I don't have one, no. I don't even...
I don't know what's going on.
Good, yeah, I do. Good evening, everyone, let's begin with call order and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, we're going to open the meeting of April 9, 2019. Item number two on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from March 12. There's been reviewed?
I was not here in...
Then I guess you won't be making a motion, Ms. McIntyre.
I won't be making a motion, or voting on it, even.
I can make a motion. I would move to accept the minutes from March 12.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous acceptance of the minutes. Next item. Next item on the agenda, number three, is a new public hearing for 226 Main Street. Mr. Clerk, if you would.
226 Main Street?
Oh, that's the meeting minutes.
Chickering.
Those are the minutes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. 247 chickering, hey, scratch that, 247 chickering. Anybody here from Main Street, hit the bricks.
Okay, okay, we are talking about the Enterprise Bank, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
My apologies, everybody.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall on 120 Main Street, North End of Amass, on Tuesday, April 9, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. To all parties interested in the petition of Enterprise Bank and Trust Company for property at 247 Chickering Road. Map 046.0, parcel 0004, North End of Amass, 01845, in the GB zoning district. The applicant is requesting variances pursuant to Town and North End of Zoning Bylaws. Section 195-7.1 Lot Area, Table 2, Dimensional Requirements, and Section 195-7.3 Yards Setbacks, Table 2, Dimensional Requirements, to construct a bank branch with drive-through in the GB zoning district. A variance is requested under Section 195-7.1 Lot Area, Table 2, Dimensional Requirements of the zoning bylaws. 25,000 square feet is required. The lot area is 24,952 square feet. The relief variance needed is 48 square feet. Two, a variance from Section 195-7.3 Yards Setbacks. Table 2, Dimensional Requirements of the zoning bylaws for one side setback in the GB zoning district to construct a bank with a drive-through. Side setback proposed is 35 feet. The required side setback per Table 2 is 40 feet. The relief variance needed is 5 feet. A variance from Section 195-7.3 Yards Setbacks, Table 2, Dimensional Requirements of the zoning bylaws for one rear setback in the GB zoning district to construct a bank with a drive-through. Rear setback proposed is 47 feet. The required front setback per Table 2 is 50 feet. The relief variance needed is 3 feet. Another variance from Section 195-7.3 Yards Setbacks, Table 2, Dimensional Requirements of the zoning bylaws for one landscape side setback in the GB zoning district to construct a bank with a drive-through. Landscape side setback proposed is 6 feet. The required landscape side setback per Table 2 is 15 feet. The relief variance needed is 9 feet. And last but not least, a variance from Section 195-7.3 Yards Setback, Table 2, Dimensional Requirements of the zoning bylaws for one landscape rear setback in the GB zoning district to construct the bank with a zoning, excuse me, with a drive-through. Landscape rear setback is 6 feet. The required landscape rear setback per Table 2 is 15 feet. The relief variance needed is 9 feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the Office of the Zoning Department, located at 120 Main Street, North End of Amass, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesdays, from the hours of 8:30 to 5:30 p.m. And Fridays, from the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And that's official.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And with that, if the applicant would...
Before, sir, I have a question for you.
Hit me.
Did I read it right?
You did, just...
Okay.
Question, I am the treasurer for the Merrimack Valley YMCA. Enterprise Bank holds the note for us. I don't think that's a conflict of interest, but if it's a gray area and we're fully staffed here, I can recuse myself.
I think probably in the, my assumption is that you wouldn't have a full share of interest in this, in this particular property, so I don't think that we'd have too much of a problem. But since we have such a full board, I think any abundance of caution, it's a wise suggestion from you. So, with that, just recheck the voting roster. Thanks, Valerie. So now with that, the applicant approach, name, address, affiliate for the record, and then fire away.
I'm Mark Johnson, Johnson &amp; Bornstein in Handover. I'm here representing Enterprise Bank. With me is Luke Bouchard from Enterprise Bank and Nicole Duquette from MHF Design.
Thank you very much.
And we're happy to be here. And Enterprise Bank is very excited about the possibility of opening a branch in North Handover. I very much appreciate, we're the only item on the agenda that happens as frequently as snow in the second week in April. So, we're happy to be here.
I didn't make it, just for the record.
We're going to be showing certain visuals, and I thought maybe I could pass out a smaller copy of them. So that when the call goes...
These the items from the packet already? Just larger versions of them, or is there something new?
These are aerial photographs.
Aerial photographs.
Yep, aerial photographs. The first one...
Did you not have these in time when you had your packets submitted?
Right, we put these together, and they just show the existing condition from the air, which I think will at least show you what the site looks like before.
So, just to let you know, one of my pet peeves, I mean, and I think your office knows this very well, is submitting information after the application has been filed?
If you don't want to take it, that's fine, too. We just think it'd be easier just to show you what the site looks like.
It's just that there's plenty of time to have your application in order, and it's, I mean, I know as a board, we all look at these, we drive by, we, you know, take time to look at it. So, one, again, one of my pet peeves is...
Assuming you can be looked at the site, I'm happy to pass on this, if that's in one of...
Nope, you can pass them out. I just want to voice my opinions.
I appreciate it. So, this is the existing conditions?
Mr. Bornstein is very well aware of my pet peeve.
How about mine? I'll tell him, is that right?
Yes, could you please? And a hug, yeah.
That was a hug?
Yeah.
And this is the site.
Not appreciably different from what was in the packet. Just in color. Very pretty.
The white.
The certification, the same thing we have, it's just in color, so you can see.
Again, there was enough time to have it submitted.
I'm sure the board is aware of Bolgezahn Hospital and what the site looks like. The existing site is located in the GB zoning district. The site is pretty much covered...
They can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Be happy to. The site is pretty much covered by a building or the pavement. The variances that we are seeking are as to the setback that abuts the 99 Restaurant Site. The 99 Restaurant Site actually was rezoned in 1991 to B2, but somehow, in the latest codification of zoning, the zoning map changed it to R3. And that's actually the reason why we need the setbacks on the 99 side. And the, so we're seeking a variance for the rear, for the rear and the northerly side yard. And those are the, those are the lines that abut the 99 Restaurant on the side and the 99 Restaurant in the rear. We're not seeking any variances on the side that abuts the residential district, which is part of the cobblestone crossing open space. So, we've tried to position the building in such a way as to maintain those setbacks. The property's been used as an animal hospital for decades. It's had a number of variances over the years to prevent, to permit the animal hospital to expand into the required setbacks. You'll see that based upon the landscaping plan and what our plans are for the site, we're actually going to be in much greater conformity with the setbacks on the rear and the side than the current operation and the current Bolgezahn Hospital currently is today. At this point, I'd like to have Nicole just take you through what our plans are for the site and to show you specifically where the setbacks, we're looking for relief from R and what we're planning on doing within the setback areas.
All right. So, these are, Nicole Duquette from MHF Design Consultants, sorry about that. And these are just blown-up versions of what you have in front of you, too. As, as was stated before, Enterprise Bank is proposing to do a 3,250-square-foot bank on this property. The property is slightly undersized, as stated before. However, this development is less intensive than the previous development. As you can see by the difference of the buildings, the building size is decreasing, the amount of pavement is decreasing.
Do you want to demo the building?
Yes.
You demo it.
We're demoing the existing building. So, this is the existing site, I should go over that first. So, the existing site is a 24,952-square-foot building. The proposed site will be the 3,250. So, that is going to be demoed as part of this.
This building, the lot, 24,000, the building's 7,000...
Sorry.
20, 25.
Yes, 7,561. So, we're going down more than half in size of the building. Where, just to give general direction of the site, it's going to be one-way circulation around the building. The front will be landscaped and have a sidewalk connectivity to the proposed, the proposed improvements planned from Mass DOT. We are proposing 18 spaces to accommodate the bank business and their employees. The bank will have one drive-up ATM lane and one drive-up, drive-through teller lane.
So, it says on...
Your plans, 23 spaces are provided, 18 are required, 23 provided. In your table in the right-hand corner.
I apologize. There is additional five spaces there, so there is 23 spaces.
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm...
No, and I want to apologize, the person that was supposed to make this presentation caught the flu right before this. So, instead of sending him here, I was, yeah, I was called in at the last minute. So, I very much appreciate your corrections to my presentation.
It sounds like I'm...
No, you're not, and don't worry about it. Like I said, I'm not as familiar, I've gotten updated on this plan, but I do want to apologize for that. So, I do appreciate it. So, there is 23 spaces. The dumpster will be located in the rear of the property, towards the commercial end. This is the 99 parking lot along here. This is the residential development, the residential lot over here, or residential use. There is a wetland line here, so we do have a notice of intent that is filed for this project. And we will be, correct me if I'm wrong, I say I believe CONCOM is tomorrow and Planning Board is next week for this plan. Just to go over the encroachments on this property, we are, like we said before, there's the 15-foot landscaped buffer between the residential district and the commercial use. So, that, currently, the, the parking spaces go past the property line. So, the parking spaces today are encroaching on that residential property. So, we're taking that away, plus giving an additional, or not an additional, the required 15-foot landscaped area on that side, on that residential side. Again, with even on the commercial side, the 15-foot landscaped buffer was, was encroached upon on the existing. We are providing more than what is there today on this, for this development. Just to give the difference on the, the areas of what is encroaching, obviously, it's zero where it was 1,760 square feet of encroachment on the existing. We're going to zero along the residential used lot line. The encroachment along the commercial use lot line goes from 2,525 to 1,630. So, there's about a half, we're decreasing half the area within, of encroachment into that landscaped area. Regarding the rear setback, we have, today, there's a nine-foot setback to the existing building, to that rear property line. In the proposed development, we'd be going to 47, so almost meeting that 50-foot setback from that residential line. Now, if this was a commercial, if this was a commercial district, that commercial use was on a commercial district, we would only have to have 35, yeah, 35 feet, and we would comply with that. Along the side setback, we comply. Along this, yes. Today, if, there's a slight encroachment on that side setback. There's a 39-foot to the property line, to the existing building. In the proposed development, we would be having over the 40 feet. This is the 40-foot setback here. So, we're doubling that setback. Along the north side, again, abutting a commercial use, the existing use had greater than 40 feet. We are encroaching into the side setback with the proposed development. It's not with the main building, but it would be with the canopy. We're five feet into that. So, we have a 35-foot setback instead of the 40 required. And again, as if this was a commercial district, a commercial use on a commercial district, we would only need 25, so we would be complying with that. We are improving the landscaping, native, with native material that's found in New Hampshire, red maple, river birch, inkberry, winter berry, among some others along the buffer. So, we are increasing that buffer along all property lines, as well as enhancing the landscaping in front. We are providing a dumpster, fully enclosed dumpster screening with an eight-foot-high wood fence to screen that dumpster. And we would be improving the drainage to, currently, this site does not have any drainage. It's all sheet flow into the abutting properties and into Chickering Road. So, we will be improving the, the stormwater by capturing it in a closed drainage system with deep sump catch bases with oil-water separator hoods and providing pretreatment through first defense units and collecting the roof runoff and infiltrating it into the ground. So, right now, the existing site has no recharge, groundwater recharge, or water quality. The proposed site is proposing to do, to recharge some roof, some of the roof water, as well as treat any water that goes off the site. That being said, if you have any other questions, I think that's it for my end of the presentation. Thank you.
The area is being reduced from 21,793 to 17,098. When we found out that the property, the 99 had been actually rezoned in 91 to a, to a business use, we thought the only thing we needed here tonight would be about 40-foot of a lot area variance. But then, when it turned out that the rezoning had changed the 99 to a residential use or residential zoning district, still with the commercial use, we're here seeking the variances from the rear setback and the side setback.
I have several questions, so. Because the variances are so small, why don't you take, make the building just a tad smaller?
Part of it, you know, part of it is to try to lay out the building so it works. I mean, obviously, the Bolgezahn Hospital's been there a long time. We're trying to size the building so that it, it meets the needs, you know, both currently and into the future as to what might be on that site and what the, yeah, how the bank would use it. We also have the drive-through, which is important to the bank, and that affects the design of the building as well.
So, I have, I have with this, everything I have, pretty, actually, pretty much no problem. It's a nice design, except for the back. So, there's five spots in the back. And you only need 18 spots. So, if you eliminate those five spots, that will give you a lot, a bigger area to have a drive-through. So, right now, you have a drive-through, a bypass, and parking. If you have all those three areas set at once, I mean, that's really, really tight. Can you get a fire truck around that? I just have kind of issues with that tight of, an area back there. So, you could eliminate those five in the back. Or possibly four. And you could have an open, open area that would make it flow better? And to get a, again, a fire truck in there as well, too.
Luke Bouchard, Enterprise Bank?
Thank you.
I think we've explored both options, and I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, we could move the, the drive-up to the rear?
No, no, no. The five spaces? The five spaces in the back.
Yep.
So, you have, you're having two passes there?
Yeah.
And spots. So, the worst-case scenario is you have a car coming up to the drive-through, a car exiting, and you have a parking, someone parked there. And that one area.
I understand, yep, okay, now...
And now, there's a fire, and a fire truck's going to come. You know what?
My hope, my hope is that my cus...
You've given us a fire?
Yes, I'm giving you a worst-case scenario, every single scenario that could happen.
My hope is that if we do have the fire, that the branch has now been evacuated and my drive-up customers have moved on. But to, to your point, you know...
You have a fire truck in, coming onto your area, for some reason.
Yeah, I mean, if there's other, I think the bigger point from, in, from my end as a facilities manager, I guess the, the bigger point is if you have a big vehicle coming through that area, regardless of its intent, whether it's a fire swing or whether it's a larger box truck. And, I mean, I think, given the radius that we have here, I think I'm comfortable that we, that we can make that turn in the five spaces, you know. One of the things that, in we speaking, in speaking to the design of the site, was we were, we were trying to respect as much as we could about shrinking this up and forward on the site without chopping it up into too many parking spaces. And, but we do, at the end of the day, we are looking for around 20 spaces to be able to staff the branch and then be able to keep enough customer spaces on the far side.
But that's not what's needed. Because you can have, because...
I understand.
Because you can put it on paper, doesn't mean it's necessarily going to work. So, and you probably have more experience than me with the facilities manager, but, I mean, I'm seeing places with the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, with actually some of the banks down here. TD Bank is extremely tight to get around. Sometimes you can't even get around. So, again, worst-case scenario, you have the three spots taken up by a parking spot, someone leaving, and someone going through the drive-through. It's just tight for me.
If I may ask?
Yep.
So, I, my, how often...
So I, my, how often do you have more than, say, two or three cars in a, waiting for a drive-through spot?
Very rarely, with the exception of, every branch is gonna have a key time during the day where you may get three or four.
Okay.
And certainly where this proposal will have an ATM at the drive-up, which does tend to queue up somebody-
Okay.
-ahead of another space.
Okay.
But we don't, I mean, I guess my, my feeling would be that, that bypass should be open and should be clear as far as the, it's a drive lane, it's not intended to be a queuing lane. That's the way we would hope to, to have it striped and designed, so that people are waiting in one line alongside the building. There potentially could be staff-only parking on the parallel side, which should reduce the in-and-outs on that backside. And then we would have a drive lane between those, you know, with the radius to be able to get the truck around. I mean, I think our, I think the fire truck, I think in North Andover, I believe, does have a trailer. I believe the fire department sent that to us.
Do you have something from them saying that they approve the plan?
They have something from, we have something from them saying that at our Planning Board meeting, that we need to show their specific model truck on our fire, on a fire plane.
It's not available for us?
Not today, I don't believe, Nicole. I don't think we have that fire truck planned today. I think, I think it was part, it was within the comments of their review set that we got last week, I believe.
So they, they had a technical review, which we, which is all boards there, so, I mean, you're coming before the zoning board as well, and so this information is important to me, and as a board, it should be important to us as well. I mean, I, why are you going to planning? What's the, why do you need to go to Planning Board? What's the meeting for?
We need special permit.
A special permit for our-
It's a development, it's a-
It's a special permit, we have a drive-through.
Correct.
So the use requires a special permit.
So you're asking me for variance in the back as well? So you're asking for a variance, so you don't think that it would be an important factor to this board as well, because you're asking for relief, to tell us why that you want this relief here? You know, a variance is, you know, the soil shape, topography. I'm not seeing any of those, actually, you know, why you need a variance. I'm not seeing soil shape and topography, just seeing the design of the building, you want a bigger building. So for me, it's, you know, it's your burden to prove that, and I'm actually saying to take less parking spots out, which is rare for me, to have a better flow of your build, of your-
And I think that, I mean, and I don't mean to, to, I'm not, certainly don't want to be argumentative with this, and I think that, at the end of the day, five parking spaces still gets us within what the zoning requires for the building, and I think that that's something that we would certainly be open to exploring in order to-
You only need 18.
That's what I, that's what I mean. So if, certainly, if we only need 18, and I know that parking is something that people also want to see, not over-parking on a site versus putting 47 spaces here wouldn't be appropriate either. So I think certainly, the bank would entertain eliminating those five spaces along the rear.
I mean, I don't even think you need the five. I think three is more, like, just more of where the whole ass is. Do you know?
Yeah, in order to, so that that really does appear, it really does provide a nice wide berth through that area at the end, so that you don't run into a situation where you're trying to get nine or 10 feet, car on one side, large area on the other side, and quite narrow straights, and trucks and things trying to get through, and create the proper traffic flow.
So you still wanted to be vague?
I, I thought you were trying to create more landscape, so.
No, more of a better flow. I mean, if you've been through TD Bank, and you have the drive-through, and you had, and you're trying to leave, or-
But these are wire, drive aisles at 10 feet each.
10, 10?
Yeah.
And then a parking, which is nine?
Right.
And then you have the landscaping in the back? Which is nine feet of landscaping. Actually, eight, you have eight. So 10, 10, and an eight-foot parking spot. I know I can't, I can't park. I have to admit that I'm not a good parker in a parallel spot like that, so.
Yeah, and we, and we don't expect, you know, like I said, I think that mainly this is, you know, we view it as, you know, employee parking, so hopefully they get in nice and early, they take their parking spaces, maybe there's one or two trips during the day, but I, I think ideally, our customers are using the 15 spaces, which should be sufficient for them, especially with the drive-up. And we can hopefully use these mainly for our own uses, and, and sort of reduce the amount of people in and out on those, those areas.
It's like the zoning requirement at other branches of this size, what, how many parking spaces do you have, and are they usually full, or do you have?
Um, it's usually, well- It's usually between, you know, 20 and 22, is, 20, 22, 23 is sort of the ballpark to get to. You know, we've done it with less, we've certainly done it with more. It really comes down to the nature of a specific site in the market that it's in, you know, some places tend to have a little bit more turnover. And again, the drive-up does make things a heck of a lot easier for us to be able to move customers in and out without them necessarily going into the branch. There's a specific kind of customer that just likes to go inside and, and say hello, and have a few minutes inside the branch, but a lot of people value their time and like to use the drive-up instead.
I notice here you do have the signs for, it's just, they're gonna, it's gonna be a one-way enter, actually, as it is now.
But if you had 20 spaces, you wouldn't feel like you were underparked?
No, I, I mean, I think it would be a very rare occasion that we would feel underparked for a typical day of business with 20 spaces.
One, two, three. Yeah, I just think those three in the back.
Which three are you looking at?
The middle three?
Yeah.
Do you leave the ones at each end?
Yeah.
In relation to the dumpster, which ones are you talking?
Just the, the two on the end.
Can I come up?
Yeah, oh, do you want to use the collared plan?
Approach the bench.
Are you any plan?
So it would be, so I have marked off these here, this one, this one, and this one?
So every other one?
Nope, X.
Okay, X.
X, X.
Okay.
Keep, keep, that's three.
Okay. Can I grab this?
Oh, you're gonna see my notes. I don't care.
I just want to make sure we have the right, the right spaces.
That's just my opinion, I mean, I'm not speaking for the board.
Have to show this clip?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
How'd you notice?
You can look at my notes, I don't really care. It's not like I haven't asked you anything.
Is the X outgoing to check respect?
Oh, that's not a parking space there. It says that there's five back there?
One, two, three, four.
Okay. You were my spirit, and I thought you meant, yeah, for these two, this isn't a parking space here. But it says it's five?
Yeah.
So there's-
Two, three, four, five. So, I should, that's one, two, three, four, five.
Two, the four.
So two, three, four, okay.
Again, just my opinion, I don't know how else, how else the board feels, so.
I'm, I'm not prepared to make an issue out of it, but I would, I would prefer the ones that Nicole was identifying, the two closest to the, to the trash receptacle.
So, getting rid of these two?
Those, those are the ones that come to my mind, since, again, we're, we're only talking about worst-case scenarios, and that's if you've got four or five cars lined up in the drive-through, it might be a tight turn for somebody coming around to navigate their way through the-
Yeah.
The drive-through lane and the trash enclosure.
Yeah, and I think that-
This one, too. So great, this five here. Can I just see your one, two, three, four, five?
It might be easier for me to do with the big plan, too, rather than this little one. So if we get rid of these two, then you have a little bit more of a swing around.
Right, and actually, yeah, I was thinking of that, one, two, three, four, five.
Getting rid of three as well?
Yeah. Keep them one and two, keeping that there.
All right, so that's the concrete.
And that would bring us to 20, you know. I mean, 20 to 21 parking spaces, or 20 to 22 parking spaces, at the end of the day, I think to the point of making a functional and appropriate site is, is small, and our, you know, and it, I won't belabor the point, but again, it's a drive-through site, so there's a little bit more wiggle room, certainly on the bank's perspective, to, to work with that.
Thank you.
Is that getting, getting you where you need to be on the parking, or there?
Yeah.
I just don't want to dispose of you, see if there are any other questions from the board, questions, comments, or concerns.
You mentioned employee parking.
On average, how many employees are gonna be working there?
I think, average would be probably six at the most, I believe, with the commercial lender.
All right, so that would still leave you, you know, 14 parking spots for customers.
Absolutely.
Right, okay.
I mean, bankers are prone to going to branches, so, you know, we, but I won't account for senior management and other folk hiding out in North Andover and taking an office for a day. I think on a typical, people that are assigned to the branch, I think you would be talking about six people.
Okay.
In terms of the specific reasons for the variance, the lot area is short about, I think, 40, 40 feet. The lot's been short for, going back decades. The zoning board has previously granted various relief on this particular lot.
I think I was on the board then, my name's there.
You don't, that's, do you remember it?
I do. Actually, I do, because they wanted- They built the back, they used the back portion, the Age of Memorial, that, I remember that.
Remember that.
Yes.
And if you look at the, what we're surrounded with, on the northern, northerly side and the easterly side, we're looking for the variances, we're surrounded by parking area, even though it's owned residential, we're, we're a business lot, in the middle of a business, surrounded by a business parking lot, and the variances, we're asking for our variances of buffers in the lot line, when the surrounding property has parking right up to the lot line. So there are no, you know, buffers on, on the other properties. We're trying to create buffers to comply as much as we can with the bylaw and still develop the site. The, if the surrounding parking lots, obviously, were zoned a business district, we, we would comply with the setbacks, but we're in the unique situation of having the surrounding property owned by 99, like I said, at one time being business, somehow getting rezoned to residential, and as a result of that rezoning, we're in looking for the variances. So it's a fairly unique situation in that regard, because typically you would have a setback from a residential district, and you'd have a setback from a residential use. We find ourselves having a residential setback from a commercial parking lot that surrounds us on two sides.
Are they on light poles? I saw a symbol for it on the plan, but I couldn't, I couldn't, I'm the legend, but I couldn't find them on the plan.
Yeah, I think it's closer, light there.
Yeah, I have a small version, but I can show you on the plan, and light pole there, 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 and there. One, two. It's on the 11-by-17. Yes.
I mean, there's nothing real close to it, but-
Right.
As far as residences go, but there are some through the, through the woods a little bit.
And we have done a lighting photometric plan, and that was submitted for the planning department approval.
And I was also thinking about screening for the headlights, especially on the right side, especially towards the back there. Though, yeah, so the way, yeah, on the right side, those, at that angle, they're pointing right at some of the houses, out of through the, through the woods there. Looks like you have a couple bushes and a stone wall, but I don't know how high the stone wall is, if that shield headlights are.
Well, when did, what, what time of the evening does, will the bank be closing?
The, the bank typically will be open until 5 o'clock, Monday through Wednesday and Friday, and we have 6 o'clock hours on Thursday, so once a week.
But your ATM is 24 hours?
ATM would be 24 hours, yes.
Okay.
But those headlights for the ATM are shining at the houses?
Yeah, and it looks like we do have dogwood, that's not gonna help too much in the winter, so we can look at planting something along this corner that's gonna be a little bit more dense of a shrub.
Mike says that, you know, it's, and it's, it's early in the evening, too, so it's not like light is that much of an issue at that time, but-
But the ATM is a concern, you know, people are coming through at any hour in there. Like, I think the, the simple bank customers, I wouldn't be too worried, because they're, no one's gonna wake up from that, but the, the ATM is a concern.
Just to give you a general idea of how, you know, where this is in relation to the residential, too, I know, this is the existing area, so our parking will be brought back to this red line here, and this is one of the present, 11-by-17s I gave you. This is the first abutter within that area. So it's a good, it's a good, at least 100 feet away.
You can, you can see through there pretty daily.
Right now, though, without-
With the winter, yes. And, and, and we can definitely maybe look at something more like a rhododendrum or something like that, that's gonna be a little bit more dense and not lose its leaves in the winter.
So what, what you guys are hitting on, actually, is something that Attorney Johnson included in the packet, which were, you know, a couple of the decisions from 35, 37 years ago, and that it appears as though, you know, there were a handful of conditions, which, you know, you don't have to read the tea leaves, too hard to figure out what was going on. But one of the conditions of the, of the relief back in 1982 was, was evergreen plant, evergreen plantings along the property lines you guys are talking about. Another thing that the 82 decision talked about was, there, we have some folks in the gallery, maybe they will share that concern, and maybe this concern is no longer existing. But certainly, parking, they wanted a fence along the 99 lines, because they did not want the, the, the branches parking to be utilized, you know, by the 99 next door. So stockade fence was a condition way back when, perhaps that solved the problem, perhaps it didn't. I'd be interested to hear from the, from any of the folks in the gallery. And the, just continuing the thought, and I'm not suggesting that this next one is a condition today, because I think conditions, conditions in the, in the area are likely different than they were 37 years ago. But condition number four in the 82 decision was that there was supposed to be a chain or a gate on each of the entrances to the, you know, to the parcel itself. Again, I'm, I'm not suggesting that be a condition today, I'm just illuminating what was going on 37 years ago. Perhaps things are different today, perhaps they are not, but certainly, lights into the backyard of the, the residential abutters that you guys are, are hitting on, certainly sounds like a rational thing to approach.
For the record, I was not on the board in 82. And it was not part of my conditions, so.
You didn't even graduate at high school.
I did. Actually, I did that year.
Just trying to help out a lot.
82 was a good year.
Yes, it was.
Still looking for the, the board, thoughts, comments, questions, concerns?
So the generators in that back right corner of the bank, is that just a life safety generator, or is it for the whole, the whole building?
It would be a standby generator.
To serve the whole building?
I mean, it would be, I imagine it would be just the same to, to do the whole building as it would be to do a small life safety.
But you have a fence around it, to screen a little bit of the sound?
Yeah, we would, and we would, you know, as all full-building generators, you know, have to be run during, once a week or something like that. We typically try to run them in the middle of the day as best we can, because nobody wants to wake up to a generator, and it tends to leave our employees knowing that it ran, so if we give them a call, they can say, hey, did the generator run yesterday? They, they still don't know.
Frank's all about revisiting history. Frank's all about revisiting history, because noise was a part of the nineteen eighty-four decision.
That would, yeah.
Oh, eighty-three.
Oh, eighty-four, yeah.
How about the road itself, chickering? Is it, is there some state work that's to be done in front of your place in that area?
Nicole, does it extend in front of the, or does it?
Okay.
Was that taken into consideration with your, with what you've proposed?
Yes, we, we did get those plans, and they are represented by the dash lines on our exhibit there. The dash lines represent the, the, they're keeping the edge of pavement line, but they are going to add a sidewalk along that side.
So you've accounted for it?
We've accounted for it, and we have planned to connect to it with our sidewalks.
In terms of the other conditions in the eighty-four decision, we don't intend to have an obedience training school, so it doesn't need to, it does not need to be inside the building.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Cushing, you're awfully quiet.
I think it's a good idea, right? I mean, they're asking for variances against the parking lot, right? So who's going to squawk? And they're taking the size of the building, almost making it in half. It is in half, right? The building, it's, the bank is a quiet use, you know what I mean? They're going to close shop at six o'clock. I mean, it's a win-win way, I see it. Right, I, I'm off for it. I think, me personally, I think they're crazy, because there's all kinds of banks up in that area, right?
Everywhere I go, there's a whole bunch of banks.
Right, right, there's a stone, and there's another bank, there's a bank at the corner across from Batucee. I mean, where do you think the business is going to, North Andover must have a lot of money, huh?
I tell you, I tell them the same thing, except every time they build, and I keep my job, so. They could keep building banks forever.
Yeah, but I'm not in the banking business, so, so you want to put a bank, you want to let it be taxed? I'm off for the tax revenue the town's going to get by, you know?
I'd rather not put that in the decision.
I mean, let me, I mean, do they do banking studies, and is there enough customers and people to warrant the use of this bank?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I mean, not to delve too deep into bank strategy, but I think that, you know, North Andover is a market that Enterprise has been around for quite some time. We've been in Andover in, sort of, looking into North Andover quite some time. We do a lot of business existing. It's one of our biggest markets that we don't have a branch in at this moment. So, you know, we, we kind of tend to go where our existing customers are, a little bit more convenience. We do, we do kind of set ourselves up between the Lawrence office, being right on the border, and Andover High Street not being very far away at all, but, you know, like I said, you keep building them.
I mean, that's, you don't money, I mean, I'm not telling you how to spend your money. And to me, I think from, when I was there looking at the property, that animal hospital is a very busy place. I was astonished to see the cars coming in and go with cats and dogs and rabbits and all of the above. And whatever you have, it's got to be less traffic than what that veterinary place has, if you can believe it or not.
I'd like to say we're a little, we'll be a little less emotional about it, too, because my visits to the site and standing in the parking lot, pointing at things, as people tend to do, I think that the speed that people are going in there, due to the nature of the hospital, tends to be a little bit less, a little bit more distracted and a little more hasty than, although some people get pretty personal about their money, too, but I think it's a little slower.
If there's nothing else for the applicant, then I'd like to invite the gallery. Is there anyone in the gallery who would like to be heard on this matter? Welcome, if you could, just your name and address or affiliation for the record.
Yeah, my name's Jeffrey Sheehy. My wife and I live at thirty-five Copley Circle, and we're a director abutter. You can actually see our house on your, on your aerial there. Uh, no, next door to the pool, next door to the pool. To be honest with you, I think it's a, it's a great use for the site. I think this is a reason why you have a zoning board, because you need a foot here, a foot here, that type of thing. I think it'll be a nice buffer for the neighborhood. I, I think it'll be, I think it'd be a great neighbor, much less use, low, quieter than, quieter than currently. I think, Nicole, the only thing I would ask is, in this top right corner, if you could beef up the trees, because currently, all the traffic is on the ninety-nine side of Bulgers. And we actually, the condos that are here across the street from your entrance, people come out at night, and you can see that right into our living room. So you do definitely get the headlights, but I think ninety-nine percent of your headlights are going to be during the day. But if you could, in that top right corner, beef up the trees, that would be, I think, fabulous, but I think be a great addition to the, to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Show you how to post a bad, right?
Oh, and I have one thing, too.
What did I say?
Bulger's dumpster is here, and it's emptied every Monday morning at five, if you were wondering. I think that's a great dumpster.
Thank you. Anyone else wish it to be heard? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll come back to the board.
Can I make a motion to close the public comment?
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? All opposed, no, public comment being closed, the board shall deliberate. Candid thoughts from the board members, please.
I already said my candid thoughts.
We can count on you, Mr. Cushing.
I mean, you know, I think the concerns that have been raised thus far were, were good ones, but they, they've mostly been addressed, I think, to what everyone wants. I think definitely having some light protection in that corner would be a really good thing. But, you know, I think it's a good design. I think they came in with a pretty solid design for the most part. They, they, it's a considerate one. They've tried to orient things to favor the, the side with population the most. And, you know, even though the ninety-nine is technically a residential district, you know, it's, it is, that's parking lot space, and so I'm a little less worried about coverage over on that side.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think they've done a nice job, I think, environmentally, aesthetically, and also a little more friendly environmentally with the work they're going to do with watershed and other comments that were made, so I'm in favor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Fagan?
Frank?
Ms. McIntyre?
Well, I'm, just, just so that I can say them out loud for everybody, because folks buy their tickets, so they want to get the full show. I am entirely in agreement with the comments that everybody made. The fact, the fact that this is going to be a lower intensive use is attractive to me. The fact that we are reducing the number of non, the number of nonconformities is attractive to me. I noticed the dumpster move as well, which is attractive to me. I, I mean, there are just, it seems like a lot of this was thought through, and we get so many applications where things don't feel thought through, that I want to say it out loud to applicants, that, you know, thank you for the thoughtfulness of the, of the plans, of the presentation, of the idea. I would, going to encourage, it sounds like we have a couple of conditions that are, that are bouncing around to the extent that we're going to be getting to a vote. I'm going to reintroduce the one that I mentioned earlier, is that the fencing along the ninety-nine border, so on the northern, northern border and on the eastern border. It's my expectation that you'll be putting a, the fence that said stockade fence, I'm not going to say stockade fence. You guys know the aesthetics better, you know what's worked better as far as facilities go. I'm not a guy who's going to, going to micromanage that. If there are other board members that have different thoughts, then by all means, there's plenty of opportunity to speak up before we close. We also heard that we'd like more, you know, more vegetation, presumably evergreen in the southeastern corner.
We'll go back to the fence and discuss with that. And what was the purpose of that? I mean, I know there's quite a bit of a slope. Is it so if someone doesn't climb up that?
What it, what it, what it sounded like, you know, just judging by the decisions, and if you guys have any more, you know, color on this, it sounded like that there was a concern that this parking lot was going to be kind of used, not necessarily intentionally by the Bulger or by the owners of the Bulger property, but that customers of the ninety-nine were to come in, park here, and then walk over to the ninety-nine. So by putting a fence in between the two lots, you'd be discouraging folks from parking in Enterprise Bank and then migrating themselves to the ninety-nine. I imagine that is true, because we have residential abutters, one of which has appeared tonight, and we weren't, as far as the Bulger hospital goes, they weren't buying into, you know, something that was going to be open until one o'clock in the morning to be, to be pulling in and out of this parking lot.
So would you be opposed to just one, like a, not like a fence, fence, like maybe a, you know, sometimes they do beams instead, you know, like a, just a barrier, not like a bear? Yeah.
Like posts.
Posts, yes.
I don't think that fence goes all, runs along the whole rear of that property right now.
The decision's thirty-seven years old.
Oh, yeah.
Fence has fallen down. Probably snow storage back there, that's pushed it over, who knows? Nonetheless, the, the concept is what's surviving in the paperwork, not necessarily the execution of it. So do I have, do I have an opposition? No, I don't have an opposition. I think the, the fence may do two things, you know, at least on the eastern border. May spare the, may spare the residential abutters, the headlights both from this site when somebody drives through the ATM, you know, at an odd hour. You know, it's, it's going to be open twenty-four hours. We're not going to necessarily have a traffic jam at two in the morning for the ATM. People aren't going to be clamoring to get money then, but it's just, it's the one or two cars through that is, you know, can be disruptive enough.
Would you be opposed to more dense shrubbery as opposed to fencing?
Once, again, depends on what you're, what you're trying to achieve here. It sounds like there was a pedestrian, there are two-fold purposes here. One is to keep pedestrians from migrating from this site to the ninety-nine site.
Correct.
And do shrubs deter your average twenty-four-year-old at ten-thirty on Friday night? I would suggest no. It's just the, the average person is going to be going up for a beer at ten-thirty on Friday night is going to, you know, walk right through the shrubs or over the shrubs.
What kind of twenty-four-year-old were you?
I was that kind.
Yeah. Okay.
And the third condition that was discussed was eliminating two of the parking spaces on the southern border.
I requested three.
Requested three. I beg your pardon, Ms. McIntyre? That's called the Scrivener's error. Were there any other conditions that the board was thinking of, concepting, had not yet verbalized?
Parking, and what was the?
And more vegetation in the southeastern corner.
Southeastern, okay, southeast corner.
There were, perhaps that should expand as well, since we did have, again, there's a historical element here. The second condition in the eighty-two decision was that evergreens were going to be planted along the entirety of the southern border. So perhaps the condition should be evergreens along the southern border, as well as an enhanced vegetation, enhanced vegetation screening in the southeastern corner.
I think they were, isn't it? Maybe they grew, they're thirty-seven years old. It could have been there. Because if they, if you, if, as they stated, the parking is actually on, not even on the lot.
Yep, so once again, I'm not necessarily opining on the execution of the condition from thirty-seven years ago, just the fact that the condition existed.
Going by what, this sort of just geometrically, both what the gentleman who's the abutter was complaining about, which is that not only people in this parking lot, but people actually across the street shining it directly through, that that, that those lights seem to be basically shining direct due east, you know, straight up, straight up the parking lot. And then similarly, you're not going to be having people parking in this lot late at night, because the building will be closed. People will be driving through to get to the ATM. And so again, the lights will be, as they're coming through, will be going due east. And so I would be less concerned about the light coming through on the, the southern edge and more concerned about what's coming through on the eastern edge. So I, if anything, I would, I would not be terribly worried about trying to build up vegetation on the southern side, but really would want it bulked up right in that, that southeastern corner, especially on the eastern side of the property.
So perhaps therein lies the stockade fence characterization that was used in eighty-two?
Possibly.
Folks ruminating on anything? What's the?
I think you could achieve. And again, I think with the fence there, it's just, here's my fence. I think if you did a combination of shrubs and a low fencing, that it might achieve the same effect of keeping people out and screening. I mean, you can't be responsible for traffic on the highway to go through, I, I mean, that's.
Sure.
I, I mean, I understand that, that it's a, it's an issue and whatever, but, I mean.
Yeah, no, I was more referring to his comment about the, the older decision being both the, the eastern and the southern sides. And the southern side is less of a concern, because with the, the animal hospital, you could imagine, you know, cars sort of pulling in to that side and shining light through that way. But it sounds like basically that that's not likely to happen here, because the only light is going to be people driving in to come around to the ATM or the people across the street, which are shining in the same direction. So there just isn't that much light that's going to be coming in on the southern side.
I mean, what's to get, you're coming into the ninety-nine and doing the same thing?
Right.
So, I mean, you can't.
Yeah, you can't, you can't block everything.
Right. And again, it was a decision with conditions thirty-seven years ago, and a lot of things have changed.
Yes.
Especially this town's changed a lot and.
Tripled in size.
Yeah, plus, I think, so.
So then am I hearing a conclusion to deemphasize or eliminate a condition regarding the southern edge of the lot and focus, focus the screening on the eastern?
That is more the southeastern side, that, that corner.
Yeah, I would just say. I would just say that corner.
Does change the bushes to, that's a.
Evergreen, and maybe a little thicker in that corner.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it needs some fence or anything. I just think that that corner is probably.
Evergreen shrub.
But don't worry about the whole side of the southern side.
Any additional thoughts? All right. Then the next, next step is, is that the, the board will take a vote. If you want us to go ahead this evening, we're going to need four votes in order to pass the measure. If we don't get four votes, then you're going to be procluded from filing a repetitive petition for two years. If it's a successful vote, then obviously, you know, celebrate in whatever way you want. So if you're, if you want the board to vote tonight, yes, sir? Is there a motion?
Do you want me to do it?
You want to do it?
All right. I'll make a motion to grant petition of Enterprise Bank and Trust Company for Property at two forty-seven Chicken Road, Mat oh, oh, four, six point oh, Pasol oh, 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 four, North Andover, Mass, in the GB zoning district, to grant the variances pursuant to section one ninety-five dash seven point one, lot area, blah, 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 blah. So the first variance that, you're going to get that blah, blah, blah down there? The first. Blah, blah, blah. So first variance is going to be requested under section one ninety-five dash seven point one, lot area, table two, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws, twenty-five thousand square feet is required. The lot area is twenty-four nine fifty-two, with the relief of forty-eight, the, the variance is forty-eight square feet. The second variance is for section one ninety-five dash seven three yards, setback, table two, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws for one setback in the GB zoning district. Construct a bank with the drive-through, proposed is thirty-five, thirty-five feet, required is forty, variance needed is five. The third variance for section one ninety-five dash seven one yards, table two, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaws for rear setback in the GB zoning, constructed bank with the drive-through. Rear setback proposed is forty-seven, required is fifty, variance needed is three. The, one, two, three, the next variance is for section one ninety-five dash seven three yards, setbacks, table two, dimensional requirements of the zoning. 2, dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw, for one landscape side, setback in the GB zoning district, to construct a bank with the drive-through, landscape side proposed as 60, required is 15, relief is nine feet. The last variance for Section 195-7.3 yards, Table 2, the zoning bylaw, for one landscape rare setback in the GB zoning district, to construct a bank with the drive-through, landscape rare setback proposed as six, required is 15, relief is nine feet, with the three conditions as noted, which are condition number one, a fencing on the rear of the property. Did you want to elaborate on that, with type or...
No.
Just screening, a fence, a fence, just want to say fence?
Fence that serves as a visual screen, I guess.
A fence that will serve as a visual screening in the rear of the property, just the rear of the property?
I think that's what we, well...
Okay.
Yes.
Parking to, parking eliminates spots three, four, and five, as noted in the meeting, and have from 23 to 20 parking spots, and to have a denser, evergreen type of shrubbing in the rare southeast corner of the property. Is there anything I missed, or anything that needed to be elaborated on? Did you want to elaborate more on the fencing, or just leave it at that?
I don't think so, just leave it at that.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Motion made, motion seconded. Who is, I'm sorry, who is voting, Valerie?
So Ron's out, so my name's on, yeah. Steve, you go. You guys.
Oh, both of us? Both of you, yeah. Oh, okay.
All right, Mr. Kuscha?
Aye. Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
All right, Mike.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that is a...
I just, I'm sorry that I have to reopen the vote, because I didn't reference any of the plans.
You're absolutely right, Ms. McIntyre.
Sorry. So I'm going to call back the vote. Or I'm going to make a...
We'll just append to the vote.
I'm going to amend, I'm going to amend my motion. And I'm going to reference, what is this, MHF? Is that MHF? Preliminary site plan dated 3/11/19? Let's see. Q3, building elevations one and two. MHF designs, existing conditions plans dated, what do they hide the date? March 13th? Turn it around. MHF site plan with Enterprises in Color dated March 13th, 2019. MHF existing conditions plans dated March 13th, and an aerial. Think I got it all?
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Sorry about that.
The vote stands and is approved. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, good luck with your next round, boards.
It actually was before this board, because of barking dogs.
Because of what?
Barking dogs.
Oh!
And it required the run to be enclosed, so it's when you go down every lane, there are different things that get people before the board, and that one seemed to be... I was not there, I was someplace else at the time.
I guess it was.
I will.
And the last item on the agenda is just a notice from Chappa regarding an affordable housing unit.
Have they addressed it to you this time?
Yeah, I did. They skipped, they skipped the D, but we're not, we're totally... It's a huge victory to have gotten that far. It's, that's a done deal. With that, no more matters on the, May. So May is canceled. There are no new petitions, this was not continued, correct? May meeting is canceled, yes, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.